Welcome to the Heflin Bay City Council Meeting of Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Here.
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you, Jessica. So, tonight, I, the Vice Mayor, am sitting in for Mayor Robert Brownstone, who is still on vacation. And our wonderful Deputy City Manager Matt Chittister is sitting in for City Manager Bob Nispit, who is also on vacation. So, our meeting is held by Zoom tonight.
Can you hear me, Jessica?
Yes, one second.
I cannot hear you.
Nicholas Laskovich is going to be doing Spanish translation this evening. And he will be able to explain those instructions now. Nicholas, can you hear me?
Okay.
Nicholas, could you explain the Spanish interpretation this evening?
Sure, sure, Vice Counsel. Lo que quieran escuchar en español esta reunión va a ser interpretada al español y lo que tienen que hacer es, en la barra de tareas de Zoom, tienen que escoger el globo donde ahí hacen clic y va a aparecer la función de idiomas y ahí van a escoger español y entonces van a escuchar toda esta reunión en español. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are ready.
Thank you so much, Nicholas. So, our next item is public forum. And Jessica, can you tell me how many participants we seem to have in the audience right now?
We have 13.
13, okay, so I'm going to permit three-minute comments for public forum. And I want to remind people that public forum is the time to address items, if you'd like, on the consent calendar. So feel free to do that. And our City Clerk Jessica Blair will call you when it's your turn and you can unmute yourselves. So with that, we'll start taking comments.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. We have Nadia Bledsoe. Nadia, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Dear Honorable Members of the City Council, my name is Nadia Bledsoe and I'm a resident of Moss Beach. I'm here today as a member of the 2021 Supervisory District Lines Advisory Commission. This all-volunteer commission is right now performing a mission fundamental to our democracy, helping to ensure all residents of San Mateo County have equal representation. We do that by using 2020 census data. New population figures are being used to draw lines so San Mateo County's five supervisory districts have close to the same number of people. But this is more than a number scheme. Districts should also fairly represent communities with shared needs and interests. On behalf of the Commission, I invite you and everyone watching or listening to this meeting to get involved in this important process. As a first step, I encourage everyone to go to smcdistrictlines.org. That's smcdistrictlines.org, where you will find a wealth of information and ways to participate. We want to hear from you about what you consider to be your community. You can fill out a survey available in English, Chinese, Spanish, or Tagalog. Share your opinions and comment on Facebook and Twitter using the hashtag #smcdistrictlines or participate in a public meeting. You can find the full schedule at mscdistrictlines.org. As you as councilmembers know, our elected representatives make decisions that have real impact on our communities. The Board of Supervisors oversees an annual budget of $3.8 billion. Where district lines are drawn impacts who can run for office and which voters can vote for candidates from a district. Once approved, district boundaries will be in place for the next 10 years. So the time to get involved is now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nadia. Very important stuff. Thanks for being here this evening. I just want to make one remark. We're going to, staff is going to pull item 1F on the consent agenda regarding the corporation yard at Stone Pine. So if anybody was intending to comment on that during public forum, if you could hold that until we discuss that item, that would be appreciated. And for those who want to participate and are new to Zoom, you can raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. And on some, most screens, it'll show the hand. If not, you can go to reactions and click on that and raise your hand in order to comment and be heard. Thank you. Next speaker?
We have no other public speakers.
Oh, okay. That's great. So we're moving on to proclamations and presentations. And tonight, we have our regular update from Claire Tutan of the Mid Coast Community Council. Thanks for being here, Claire.
Am I muted? Can you hear me?
You can hear me, Claire.
Okay, great. Just a couple of few things. One is, good news is the, our version of the parallel trail, the multimodal, multimodal trail on the east side of Highway 1 has been green-lighted. It was being held up because of a dispute involving other issues. But Caltrans and the county have come to an accommodation and it is on a fast track. This is the trail that will provide service to, or access to El Granada Elementary and to Wilkerson School. So we're really happy to hear that. Our newsletter is coming out again. I would urge people to go to our new and improved website at midcoastcommunitycouncil.org and sign up to be on the distribution list for the newsletter. You can also send all of us emails from that site and get all kinds of information. So we'd encourage that. Also, along the line of what we just heard, we have taken a position on the supervisory redistricting. We're particularly concerned about the proposed plan, which would split the coast side into at least three different supervisory districts. And we were very concerned that that would give us less voice rather than more. So our position is that we would like to have Pacifica through the Santa Cruz border in one district and possibly include Daly City in that with the idea that the entire coast would be represented by one person exclusively. So, but we definitely didn't, didn't want the one that divides up the area. I'm sure you probably agree. And that's about it. Or the, your, your people that work for you, who are in charge of economic development, will be at our next meeting. So we'll be coordinating with them.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Claire. I don't have any mayor's announcements of community activities and community service, but staff has a robust update on several items this evening that'll cover some of the things that are coming up. So I'll just pass off to staff. Catherine, do we have any items to report on a closed session?
No, the council has not met in closed session since our last meeting, so nothing to report on.
Thank you for that. And now I'll ask our Deputy City Manager Matt Chittister to give us some, and staff to give us some updates.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reddick. There are three items of update listed on the agenda. We actually have some additional items that have come up over the last few days. So I think we have a total of seven updates from staff. I'll just ask all staff participating to keep them brief and focused on the most important points. We can keep the movie, meeting moving, but I think you'll be pleased with some of the items we're sharing tonight. Next slide, please, Jennifer. You can go to the next slide as well. At our last meeting, I announced a community forum that is being planned by Life Moves, the county and the city in relation to the Coast House. The Coast House is the homeless shelter that was developed after the county purchased the coast side inn on Highway 1 last year. And it has now been in operation for a full six months with the full, you know, not just COVID response, but full operation. And there's lots of questions and people are seeking an update. And so the intent is to hold a Zoom-based forum to provide updates and take questions and answer them with the community. Last meeting, I had announced this for October 28th. Shortly afterwards, some things came up and it needed to be pushed a couple of weeks. So I apologize for the change, but please save the date for Wednesday, November 17th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. PCRC will be moderating the meeting and you'll have a chance to hear from Life Moves, the county and the city, as well as members of our Community Advisory Committee, which represents our community in, you know, working with us and making sure that the, the shelter really serves the community in the right way. There will be additional marketing and information sent out, including a link over the next couple of weeks, and we hope people can join. Next slide, please. I have an update on the county recovery initiative, not to be confused with our coast side recovery initiative. Next slide, please. The county has recently formed an Office of Equity and their goal is to really put a lens of equity and equality across all the activities of local government here in San Mateo County. And so they'll be holding several forums starting this Saturday to hear feedback from the community about how we can assure that the recovery of our county from the impacts of COVID has an equitable lens and really thinks about the equity of all members of our community. And so you'll see on here several dates and times that people can join. These are all remote-based, Zoom-based conversations. On Wednesday, next Wednesday, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, there's a Spanish-language one. And on Tuesday, November 2nd, there will be one presented in Chinese dialects. And if you want more information, there's a URL at the bottom of this slide, Or you can just go to the county website and look up equitable recovery and you'll be able to find this. And they really want community impact and in order for it to be equitable, they, they hope to hear from a broad base of constituents here in the county. Next slide, please. And with this, I'll turn the time over to Scott Phillips from our Planning, Community Development Department. He will be presenting the next two slides.
Scott? Good evening. Good evening, City Council members. I'm Scott Phillips, Associate Planner, and I've been working on two projects that are of particular interest. The first one is, Matt mentioned, the downtown parklet program. Next slide, please. And the idea behind this is that this will provide a, eventually provide a blanket coastal development permit approval coverage for many of our businesses in the downtown, as well as provide, you know, a sort of a framework for parklet design. And this slide shows the, in red here, based on feedback received from businesses, which businesses were, are actually interested in constructing a parklet. That's how we kind of came up with the red lines there to, that shows the area in which the blanket permit would be covered. Now, this item is scheduled for our Architectural Advisory Committee review this Thursday morning at 8:30. That meeting will be both in virtual and in person. And we certainly invite any thoughts or ideas on parklets in our downtown, for folks to reach out to me and certainly let those comments be known. Excellent. And then the other project is Imagine Magnolia Park. Now, this Magnolia Park is, was shown as a priority within the Adopted Comprehensive Parks Master Plan. Next slide. And we are asking the community for input on future improvements or any other thoughts that, for that matter, on Magnolia Park and, you know, the sort of the future of this city-owned park space. And we actually have scheduled a community outreach meeting onsite this Saturday between 10:00 AM and 1:00. Even if it rains a little bit, we're still gonna hold the meeting. Hopefully we won't get doused in rain. Looks like it's gonna come in more Sunday. So we're excited to receive more feedback from the public on improvements to Magnolia Park. Thank you.
A lot of good stuff going on in town, you know, including this weekend. So I hope you'll, you'll join up. That's it for the reports?
We have a couple more reports. I think Jennifer Chong will share the next couple and then I think Jessica will share the final item.
I'll be quick, I promise, but I just have a couple exciting things to share with the council and the community. The first of which is our annual Fall Community Site Recycling Days happening on November 6th, so Saturday, November 6th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM noon. It'll be at the Smithfield Parking Lot at the end of Wave Crest Road. And we are so excited to be able to bring back a little bit of normalcy to this event. We will be having our e-waste vendor onsite with attendees there or attendants there that will be able to actually unload and help to actually offload some of your e-waste. We'll have compost pickup, document shredding, we'll have the whole shebang. So we're really hoping that people come out, use this service. For the e-waste recycling, we are asking that individuals put all of their material in the back, in their trunk or in their backseat and remain masked and in their vehicle so the attendants can safely grab that material for you and you don't even have to get out of your car. But again, November 6th, Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00, we'll be out at Smithfield. So we hope that you'll come and join us. And the second update, which I just found out earlier today, is that we got approved by CalRecycle to adjust our hours or our days once more of our pilot project at the right behind CVS. And I think that this will be a welcome change to the community. We are shifting the days of operations to Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. So both weekend days, we are now going to have a full day from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, instead of Sunday, Mondays, and Tuesdays. And so as I've mentioned before, this is a pilot project. We received funding from the state to offer this, this program to the community. And we're continuing to adjust and try to make it more accessible, more, you know, more useful to our coast side community. And so, starting October 29th, not this weekend, but the following weekend, we are going to be shifting into these new days. So please take advantage of this service. Go redeem your bottles and cans, get some money. And we hope that if anyone has feedback for us on days or hours that would be more appropriate, feel free to reach out and let us know. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and toss it over to Maz, who has a quick update on the Highway 1 South Ribbon Cutting Ceremony.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council and members of the public. I'm Maz Moser-Gini, a city engineer. This is a fun one I'd like to give everybody an update on, which was our Highway 1 South Ribbon Cutting Ceremony that was last week. Next slide, please. I just wanted to share some photos of the site. Overall, it was, it was a nice turnout. We obviously kept it small and outdoors due to current situations. But it was a great little event last Wednesday, October 13th, around 11:30, we got together and celebrated the opening of this wonderful project. Overall, our construction cost for the Highway 1 South project was approximately $3.6 million. And we're, as we're closing out the project, it looks like we're coming in at budget and on schedule, where Redwick is finishing up here. So we've got, to recap, we've got a new signalized intersection and Highway 1 median improvements, rail line right-term movement from northbound Highway 1 to Main Street, a ped bike crossing and safety improvements, undergrounding of overhead utilities, emergency vehicle detection, southern entrance, as well as it being a major southern entrance to downtown. So just to name a few things. Overall, it took about a year to get to this point. We had the groundbreaking event, believe it or not, about a year ago, around, right around this time. And even with a few conflicts and delays, we were still able to finish off in that one-year timeframe. We had a wonderful group that attended as well. I just wanted to thank all the folks that came out and the folks that were lending their support. We had some great speakers, Vice Mayor Reddick made some wonderful comments, as well as Supervisor Don Horstley and the Berlin Game Councilmember Emily Beach, who's the San Mateo County Transit Authority's Chair. In attendance, we also had Councilmember Joaquin Jimenez, Councilmember Harvey Rarback, and Councilmember Deborah Penrose. It was great to see everybody out there. I just wanted to give a couple of thank yous to a lot of the folks that made this possible. First, what our partners in funding on this project, the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, 80% of this, that $3.6 million was provided by, by the SMCTA through the Measure A Funding Source, which is basically, which is essentially approved by the voters. So this is a public approval that really means a lot. I want to thank our Public Works crews that have been able to help us out and oversee the site on off-hours and on the weekends. Just to name a few, Kevin, Rob, Armando, Jonathan, Ramsey, Michael and Todd. We had a great engineering crew. I wanted to thank Ray and Ferris for their work on this one. Mark Thomas and company who did the design, as well as Kukuchi and Kankal, our local landscape architects, Bang engineers and many more. Also wanted to give a special thank you to our communications team for all of their support and help getting the message out and every turn on this project and the event planning logistics as well. Colleen, Jessica, thank you guys so much. And a special thank you to our ceremonies MC, Matthew Chittister, jumping in when Bob was on vacation and really making this thing happen. Thank you, Matthew. That's it for me.
Before we jump to the next one, Maz is very humble and very quick to give praise to everybody else. And I just want to make sure he gets due praise for his work and his leadership on this. He's, he's a real asset to our, our city team and his skills and talents are shown in a project like this. So thank you, Maz. And there's a lot of excitement out there. You know, the groundbreaking happened last week, but the, the signals were only turned on today and the intersection opened today. And right before this meeting, I was on a Zoom call that included Chief Cosgrave from the Fire District. And his Zoom background is a picture of the open intersection that he must have snapped this afternoon. He's so excited to have this new intersection for, you know, a variety of reasons. So we've made, we've made our fire district very happy. And hopefully we make our cyclists, our pedestrians, our downtown businesses and residents happy. And this really proves to be a great asset to us going forward.
Yeah, and I want to say thank you to staff for, not just, you know, managing the project well, but, you know, addressing people's concerns. Because during the time of construction, you know, issues arose, you know, that had, you know, safety implications and there were concerns expressed by the public. And I thought staff did a good job of responding, you know, promptly and making the fixes they could promptly as well. So I, you know, I, I think the interaction with the public, you know, given the tension around it, was, was very well done. And I think the project is a, is a game changer in terms of, you know, the access improvements and the, you know, the operations as well. And that it'll benefit downtown. So it's really kind of a win-win, you know, all around. So thanks again to our excellent staff and consultants. Would any of the other councilmembers like to comment on that item? Okay, I guess we can move on to the next thing. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, Maz. I think our last item is Jessica Blair, our Communications Director and City Clerk, talking about our redistricting process.
Yes, thanks, Matthew. I wanted to share that we just finished a few weeks of pretty intense outreach with the community as we are nearing the point of reviewing draft maps. Staff tabled at the library, the farmer's market, Make It Main Street. We compiled paper kits that went out to the Meals on Wheels program and were handed out to seniors visiting some of the classes and lunches at the senior center. We also tabled outside of both the English and Spanish mass at our Lady of the Pillar. We passed out information kits at the food bank and an All Us event. And then also emailed informational kits to a lot of the groups on the coast and different HOAs and other community-based organizations. And with the information we were providing was, what is redistricting? What is the process that we're going through and how people can get involved? And so far, we have received 200 of the surveys back that we sent out that asked both what type of district model people prefer, as well as what they consider to be their community of interest. Next slide, please, Jennifer. The deadline for completing the survey and submitting a draft map is coming up next week on October 25th. And then on Monday, November 8th, the Redistricting Advisory Committee will meet again. And this will be the first time that they review all of the draft maps submitted, as well as the demographer-drawn maps. And so we're looking forward to reaching that stage of the process. The two recommended maps will come to the City Council at our January meeting for review and comments back to the committee. The Zoom information is on the screen here, but will also be available on the agenda, which will go out the week before the Monday meeting. So. That concludes that update. And I believe all of our manager updates tonight.
Thank you to, to staff for that report. And folks might not be aware, but the redistricting process and working with the advisor group is very intensive. It's very time consuming for our city clerk and communication staff. I know that our city attorney is involved as well. In addition to, you know, consultants. So there's a lot of manpower being applied to this issue. And thank you for that. It'll be really exciting to, to see the maps. So thanks for that report. And that's it for the city manager updates. So we're moving on to the consent calendar. And we have one item that staff would like to pull, which is item 1F. And I would like to pull item 1D. And would someone like to make a motion to approve the rest of the others? Well, if not, then I will approve them. So I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Item 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, warrants for the month of September 2021. Item 1C, Second Amendment 2 and restatement of the Joint Powers Agreement establishing the Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance. Item 1E, approved city's response to the August 11th, 2021 grand jury report entitled San Mateo County California's Ground Zero for Sea Level Rise. And item 1G, display of the LGBTQ progress flag for the month of October 2021 at City Hall to commemorate LGBTQ History Month. And item 1H, award of amendment number four to the Professional Services Agreement with ELS. Plus for continuation of architectural support for permitting bidding and construction of the John L. Carter Park Renovation Project, CIP number 611. So I need a second time then?
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So Matt, would you like to give a brief report on 1D?
Thank you. We'd be happy to. So item 1D is related to the city's led and collaborated Coastside Recovery Initiative, which we kicked off last January with a large open house and has been a really great and ongoing project. Not only for the city, but for the entire coast side. We have a wonderful task force that convened both as a large group and in small working teams over 20 times over the last eight or nine months. And have developed 15 recommendations for, not just for the city, but for our entire community. Both government, business, individuals, nonprofits, to work towards a more resilient future in our economy, as well as to recover from the impacts of COVID. We had originally intended to bring those recommendations to you earlier this month. Unfortunately, we're working with one of our partners to resolve some, some questions around those recommendations. And then your council will be the first public body that we share these recommendations with and start gathering feedback from. Karen Decker, our Senior Management Analyst from the City Manager's Office, has been our project lead on this item. And she's been working very closely with our consultant, Erica Wood, who's a local resident and a real asset to this project. We've been working with her since late 2020 to develop and plan this initiative. And we're happy to have had her support throughout the process. And the item before you is to extend her contract to help us continue now from the development of the recommendations to the implementation measures and creating a framework to make sure that implementation moves forward. Again, not just within the city, but among the community. And one of the important roles she's had is, actually, I just got word about five minutes ago that we've submitted a, an application for the Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grants being offered by the Economic Development Administration. The grant application is for close to $500,000 to help with implementation of this plan. And she's been really a key player in all this. And we, we feel that her services will be really imperative to moving this initiative forward over the next several months and get it into a position where it can be sustainable over the next couple of years. And I think I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions or concerns, happy to hear them now.
Matt, could you explain to the council the urgency of approving this before we've even seen the recommendations?
Yes, yes. And, and I understand the concern of, of this item coming before you, before the recommendations are presented. And as I shared, not a part of the original plan, we had to make adjustments due to the needs of one of our important partners. And it freed up the time to work on this grant. Unfortunately, what that means is, is since we've exhausted the current contract that we have with Ms. Wood, we would have to wait for a future meeting to, to bring this forward and, and be without her services for, for a month or longer. And it's really important to us to keep the momentum moving towards implementation. We have a lot of community support. We gathered 17, I'm sorry, 20 letters of support from our partner agencies and community partners for this Build Back Better grant. And they're all very interested in continuing to move this forward. And we think, again, that Erica plays a really key role in that.
Do any of the council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think we are very, very lucky to have Erica working for us. She is a co-sider. And co-siders understand the coast like people over the hill do not. So when we have a consultant and she's someone local and she's doing such a good job, I, I am fully in support of continuing her contract. And bless you, staff, for getting that grant applied for. I am just so tickled. And I know that was a rushed job and it was hard work and it took many hours, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Penrose. Anyone else? Okay. So I asked for this to be pulled because, you know, it's, it's been a year. And the, the city council has not had a chance to weigh in yet on matters that will involve, you know, policy decisions, including, you know, decisions to provide, you know, financing for, for some of the recommendations. And I thought it was important to just, you know, bring staff's attention to that. And I think it's going to be really important to bring recommendations forward soon, since it's been about a year. And to bring forward, you know, recommendations that reflect, you know, the depth of participation, because there's been a lot of participation. So I personally would like to see recommendations that are, you know, specific and that have been vetted for, you know, financial feasibility. But I, but I'd like us to start taking a look at this, you know, as soon as November. I, I don't think it behooves us to go much longer without actually seeing the recommendations. And I'm, I'm sure that all the groups that have been participating are very proud of their work. So I, I'd like to ask staff to bring those forward. At one of the November meetings, if possible, so we can start having, you know, that conversation. I'm really glad about the grant. I'm not questioning anybody's talent here. But I think it's time to start looking at, you know, outcomes. And that to me would, would be, you know, sort of icing on the cake for this year long process. So. I just wanted to, you know, put a flag in the ground on that, that it's, it's time for us to start looking at specific policy recommendations. So I'll get off my high horse.
We, we appreciate that, Vice Mayor. And we, we fully understand your concerns and your desire to see these move forward very quickly. And we, we are committed to bringing these to you either at our next meeting or the, the second meeting in November. So point taken, totally valid. And, and we appreciate the support. And, you know, it, the, the comments indicate how important this really is and how important it is for the community and for you as a council. And we, we really appreciate that. So thank you for, for giving us that opportunity.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I move, let me just find it here.
That's item 1D?
Yes. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Wood Consulting Services for Economic Recovery Plan Services, extending the term to March 31, 2022, and increasing the not to exceed amount by $70,000 to $160,000.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for taking the time on this item. So the next item is 1F, amendment to, amendment number two to the agreement with BKF Engineers for Design Development for Phase One of Construction. Stone Pine Corporation Yard.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm having my usual problem. It's. I hate this. I'm ready to see you guys in person. Sorry. Let me try this again. Okay.
John's ready for, John's ready for an easel and a notepad.
I'm, I'm ready for, golly, anything to, to happen there that, that, that helps me out with this one. Gee, many Christmas. Tell me about it.
John, do you want me to share it?
Man, yes, please. You know where it is?
Yeah, opening it now.
Sorry, folks. I thought I had it connected in and I'm losing my head to 63 shares today and I still can't get it right. All right, sorry. So thank you. And I think one of the things we, we tend to forget sometimes where we are in process and conversations. And we went to the Planning Commission a couple of months ago and talked about this. And sometimes we forget that we haven't really had a recent update to the city council on kind of the status and where we are with the, the Corporation Yard work. And so we thank you actually for the opportunity tonight to, to talk a little bit about, about this. Next slide. Thank you. So tonight is a, is a, just a step in the process, but, and we are asking for approval of a contract amendment. Number two, with our engineering firm, to basically continue with design development for the construction drawings for the Happen Bay Corporation Yard. And what we want to say is that the, that the Corporation Yard at this point, based on comment that we did receive from Planning Commission and through other conversations throughout the last several months, has been pretty much bifurcated from the rest of the property at 880 Stone Pine. And so, next slide, please. And let me explain that a little bit. So just to give orientation to, to the 880 Stone Pine site, this is the entirety of the site. You have up to the top left corner, the existing Frog Pond, which needs no more introduction. The green area is the area that was designated as part of the sales purchase sale with Post was the, and is the conservation easement. And that includes also the rip, the riparian and wetland buffer setbacks in that, with that area. Up to the, the very right side of this, where the, roughly where the existing yard is, is where the new yard is proposed. And I think there's a few constraints to look at, particularly both on the east and to the north is high fire hazard zone designation. We also have within a portion of this area, the Special Flood Hazard Zone, or what other people would recognize as the 100-year flood zone. And this, as far as the site goes, is the highest known area or designated area for potential dam inundation. And it's the earliest place on the property that will receive that. If, if, and if in fact, failure happened. So let me go to the next slide, please. So just for perspective, so what you're looking at is a, is a focused in area for the yard itself. What you have is this topiary gray area here is basically the proposed sprung structure, the storage facility. I think there's been some questions about what the size of that is, whether too big, too little. There were some questions on both sides of that. I think at Planning Commission meeting, we are also looking at this being zero net energy usage. So we are looking at, at a significant amount of solar array here just for this site. This area is under, is what we have designated, but this is likely to change a little bit in this. But you're roughly looking at somewhere in that range of the number of solar panels necessary. You've got an end, access that runs to this point, parking for both customer and employees, as well as our own vehicles for the yard, which will be fenced. You've got an accessory here. And this project would retain the existing office building and site there, as well as doing other site work. So. And again, the conservation easement that was required as part of that sale clips part of this area as well. So in this, we're looking at basically out of, out of the total acreage, somewhere a little over five acres for the Corporation Yard proper, everything with that. Go back one slide if you would, Jessica. So just in perspective, what we are looking at and what this project would have, would, and this contract would do, would be to deal with engineering services, dealing with the yard itself. And would also look at access and utilities necessary to serve this property. It would also look at utilities and access issues related to the remainder of the property, primarily the area here. And we know this has been of some question and some interest within the community for other uses. And at this point, rather than identify specific uses with the coastal development permit for the Corporation Yard, we are suggesting that no specific use be identified in there and, and evaluated. But we understand that on November 9th, the council will be talking to the community about potential housing sites and opportunities. This will be one of those that will be discussed and identified. And at the Planning Commission, we'd identified a couple of other, I think, viable uses, including solar use and community gardens. So all of those things are still remain on the table as possibilities that need to be evaluated and looked at. And again, I think November 9th will be a great opportunity to learn a little more about, you know, what's the possibilities for housing? And then I think down the road, we can deal with that. Nothing that we're doing at this point limits or restricts what can be done on the rest of the property. We're not locking in anything. But again, we've tried to locate our site in a way that would buffer, frankly, anything that happens in that adjacent area from the high fire hazard, from industrial properties there with a fairly light touch actually use, which is our Corporation Yard. And also address the issues and needs with regard to conveying the frogs from the Frog Pond through. So all of those things in place is, is what we're trying to achieve. I will say just one more thing as a reminder to the community and to the council a little bit, that we did take out a loan to help with the purchase and acquisition of this property. That loan has specific conditions attached to it, which include requiring the expenditure of certain funds for the construction-related elements of this by next August. So everything that we do is on a very tight timeline, trying to make sure that we meet our obligations and commitments and are not remiss in meeting those obligations under our loan. We do not want to be in default onto those provisions or lose the potential for that funding. Those are, that's important funding for us. So. So, I hope that helps answer some of the questions that have, uh, come around of late and, um, and again, thank you for the opportunity. I think it's high time for us to be talking a little bit to the council about, um, what the plans are and how excited we are about what's going on here. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Doughty. Are there council members who have questions for staff on this item? Councilmember Penrose?
Yes, John, could you do me a favor, go back to the last slide or the one before that and explain what you're talking about when you talk about solar? I'd also like to know if there are any plans to have solar on the roof of the new building.
Sure, um, so we, this area right here is, um, has been the, was the initial location for the solar arrays.
Can you use a pointer, John? I don't.
I was trying, I, I, I am, maybe it's just not very visible. I, well, Jessica. Maybe you can look, I, I'm doing it on my own screen, but I don't have control over the item. So it's those, uh, there you go, thank you. Those are the solar panels, um, and at this point they are, um, uh, look to be ground-mounted. And, um, that also, in, in part because we really don't have an area that's, that's well-suited for rooftop. Our concern is that we are looking at a vinyl, basically a vinyl sprung structure. It's the company, but it's a vinyl structure, um, that is not really designed, um, to handle, um, and have attachments of solar. So that's one, that is a provision that we're looking at, um, elsewhere, um, particularly ground-mounted. We also are going to be, you know, we will look at and we can continue to look at whether, um, the, the structures, the covered parking structures could also be added to this. But at this point, we are looking at absolutely meeting, um, our obligations and requirements for this. And we may actually generate and we could look at designing this to generate additional, um, beyond what our site would use.
Yeah, my reason for asking the question is, is that, um, if we're talking about the possibility of conserving some ground for other uses, um, if, if there is a way to get the solar panels off the ground, then that ground can be used for something in addition.
Uh, can you go back to the other slide, Jessica, the bigger picture? Thanks. So here's the, uh, I, I appreciate what you're saying and, um, one, so let me say this. One of the issues of putting those on the ground matter means that it, down the road, we could actually remove, relocate and deal with that. And actually, we're looking to relocate those to provide an opportunity for future growth and development of potentially additional storage and, and, and facility there for the corp yard as we grow down the road and everything with that deal and the needs. Right now, we have sized the, the, the existing facility at pretty much the bare minimum that we think we can deal with for the next ten, fifteen, uh, years or so. The other piece of this is, is that, um, is that we have, so, um, right along the edge of the, of the property line between the areas where, uh, from, from kind of the yard area and that is going to have to be the frog dispersal area. So basically, no matter what we do over on that side of the property, that you're going to have a frog dispersal area. So nothing we do can like add additional lands, plus you have a setback, uh, area for the Frog Pond itself. So basically what you're looking at is what is below this, this, the, the road that's shown there is almost on the frog, is right along the frog, um, hundred fifty setback, uh, foot, foot setback zone. So basically, you've got a, still a very constrained site. So, yeah, opening up that area along ninety-two next to the high fire hazard zone doesn't really provide, um, much in the way of benefit to a future use in this other area. The other piece of this is that we really need to have this fenced and secure, we need lay-down area for, um, larger supplies. We often have projects that need to have storage and secure storage for, for our public works projects, both, uh, for the city and for other agencies and other firms, um, and folks out there that we deal with. So there are many reasons why we do need, um, the area, but from, I think, the perspective of a future use on that, um, having that additional area, uh, adjacent to San Mateo Road, Highway ninety-two, whatever you want to call it, is a very little benefit to this. And there's really no way to squeeze out where the yard is in terms of size from, from that point.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Penrose?
Um, not completely, no, I still don't understand why we can't stick solar on rooftops.
Uh, again, uh, we, we can certainly look at it, but the issue is, is that when you have a vinyl, a vinyl structure, you, a vinyl structure needs to have, not have, um, punctures through the, the, to install, um, you know, whole solar panels on it. So that, you know, we, we need to keep that, uh, or, you know, in that. And that's the, that's the, uh, very efficient way to deal with it.
John, if I may add, John, if I may add, yeah, the, um, the specs, the specifications on those temporary vinyl structures are very specific on loads and the wind as well as the seismic. So I, I, uh, we can look into it, but I don't think that those usually, those usually don't requ, uh, don't allow that type of a connection.
And why do we need to do these, use vinyl structures?
So, so let's, let, let's, uh, can I, can I, can I ask a question? I, I guess the, the broader question is this. I, I guess what, what we're saying is whether we put it on the roof or not, we need to have this carved out of five acres. So if, we can certainly look at an installing PV on the roof of the existing, uh, building, the existing office building, we can look at rooftop. But the bottom line is, is that what I, you know, I, i- is that, is that our, is our position and recommendation strongly is we need this piece of land for the Corporation Yard and you can't use this piece of land for other purposes realistically. So, um, and this is what was shown and identified basically when we went for the loan. And this is kind of the area, this is the improvements that we talked about and this is what's necessary. So I think if the, if the issue is about rooftop solar installation, then we can certainly look at that. If the concern is about, hey, could we squeeze this more? The answer I'm going to tell you is, we believe no, we, we can't and shouldn't squeeze this site anymore. This is what we, this is what we should deal with. And because there are so many constraints, and I think on the ninth, when you see the constraint map and understand, um, it'll, it'll be a lot clearer why, why I'm saying what I'm saying here tonight for this deal. And again, you ultimately have the say over whether we proceed or not and whether it's funded and, and whether we move forward with this project. So, I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Well, a lot of the questions I was gonna ask, uh, Councilmember Penrose, you know, as those questions. Yes, I look in at the, the picture at scale. You said, uh, John, there's five, uh, how, how big is, is, uh, the corp yard to be built?
Well, remember, um, it, so there may be some adjustments to the parcels to deal with, um, the conservation easement. Let's go back to the, if you can, go back to the broader scale. So remember, part of our five-acre parcel includes the green area, which is the conservation easement. So our net buildable air acreage is, is far, is far less than the five acres that we're showing on there as the five-acre parcel. So, um, we're at, at probably, um, I, I, the calc is probably a little over three and a half acres or right around three and a half acres net of actually usable, uh, developable area there, given that constraint on that. Um, and so that is pretty much about equivalent to what's remaining in the remainder area of potentially developable area outside of that, the area to the south of the, of the roadway, um, there with that. Um, and in terms of, of acreage and again, um, those acreages, those numbers will be there. Again, um, you know, I, I just, I, I cannot reiterate this strongly, more strongly. We have a loan and we have obligations, we purchased this. We have a loan outstanding on this that said we are going to build a Corporation Yard, basically including these and these improvements, these issues and everything with that deal. And we can't buy out that loan anyway until at least seven or ten years. So we have, um, commitments and, and everything with this deal. So, um, again, I'll go back to the point. This has the special flood hazard zone, the one-hundred-year flood zone on it, the area where our yard is. The other doesn't. This is right abutting, spent a high fire hazard zone, which is an area that under our LCP, um, basically said we should not construct housing. We have existing housing to the west, usually want to have housing near other housing. Also, you're at a shorter distance where this is located on the, on the site to where fire has to get to it. Fire is going to have concerns about the length of the access into this site, their turnarounds and all of the issues go down. So all of those things play better into a shorter distance and run to that, to that point. So, um, again, I, um, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the com, I'm struggling with this simply because, um, you know, you as the council had made a commitment to move forward with purchasing the property for the sole intended purpose of the Corporation Yard. And we are working toward that to meet our obligations under the loan. And I understand the desire for other things. I think those can be also met. But we also need this, we also need this as a priority as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, we do need a corp yard, you know, that, that's no question about it, you know, but the city also has all the priorities, you know, and, uh, so it's just about looking about what other options, other opportunities for this property. And then that's, you know, that's, that was the question, you know, about how big of a property, uh, space you need for a corp yard, you know, for the city of Half Moon Bay. Yes, looking at scale and I understand, you know, uh, Jill did bring it up about looking into, uh, parts of the property closer, you know, to building, you know, existing building, you know, on the west side of the property. It's just about, since like I said, some of the questions that I had, uh, Councilmember Penrose asked the questions, they're looking into, uh, uh, solar panels, I'm okay with the solar panels. And I understand some of the solar panels can be placed, you know, on rooftops. We, we see it, uh, the schools, you know, uh, middle school or the high school, we see it.
Yeah, no, absolutely, you can do that.
Yeah, so no, so it's just the area, you know, that, that we see it. My question i- is, you know, how big of a corp yard do we need for a city of Half Moon Bay? You know, for the next ten, fifteen years, uh, and to be a safe area from the flood zone and from fire hazards, but also thinking about, you know, we are in great need of our locations to build housing for a community. So it's just looking for all the options that we have.
The simple, the, the simple answer is what you're seeing, we're not, we're, we're not asking for more than we need. What we're asking for is the right size. This has always been the right size for us. We did a entire process internally with looking at the programming. This is the size, this is the site. But let me go back to the, to the larger scale one, uh, please. Jessica. I, I have to remind you, um, all of you, it already with that deal. We are going to have a fifty-foot around this area between, basically from the Frog Pond down to roughly the edge of where our Corporation Yard is. There's going to be a probably a minimum fifty-foot frog corridor there, fenced frog corridor that can't, that we'll have to bridge with culverts and everything on the driveway. You can't build a house across this and deal with this. So there, this is a constraint that's, that's there. And again, on November ninth, we are going to show you this and, and, and show you why this absolutely makes sense. But your question was a very simple one and I'll give you the simple answer, which I think I already did. This is the size that we need, this is the size that you, as council member, should be looking at for the future of this community that you will not likely have to expand in terms of area ever again with this. But we may have to add additional facilities, additional cupboard space, enclosed areas, everything over the next twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty years. Remember, this is also where your emergency, uh, where your emergency, uh, services are also centered. We have a lot of the emergency facilities, emergency equipment, materials, all of those things here. So this is not just about the Corporation Yard. This is about serving and protecting, uh, all those on the coast side. So those are all pieces to this that are, that are just absolutely critical and necessary.
Councilmember Rarback, do you have a comment?
I, I briefly, um, I do. I, with our, uh, call-in today, uh, to Jill, I got the feeling that she is working hard to see what can be done for putting housing on this site. And so, I'm, I'm waiting for November ninth. Uh, I have faith that, uh, Jill and the rest of staff understand the importance of, uh, us building, uh, housing on the limited, uh, city-owned property. I, I understand the constraints, uh, on this property. I, I see that, uh, the five acres that allotted to, uh, the corp yard makes sense at this point. But I, I'm optimistic that, uh, Jill will work some wonders and, um, waiting for November ninth to hear what she has to say. So, that's my comment.
Okay, so I don't see this as a housing item, I see this as a Corporation Yard item. And I haven't made a policy decision to locate housing here. So, um, I, I'm not up to talking about that tonight. We're, we're going to hear more about, uh, site constraints. It's not the only place we can locate housing. It's probably the only place we can have the sort of, um, corp yard that we need, the size and scale that we need. You know, it's about public works and public works is an industrial use. And, you know, there's, there's vehicles, there's chemicals, there's, um, there's equipment that could be dangerous. So you need space for all those things and, and they need their own setbacks. So, um, you know, five-acre corp yard, you know, I, I, I think is, uh, you know, perfectly suited for Half Moon Bay and for at least, I would say, the next twenty-five years. We're not growing that much, right? And, and the council has made public works a priority, both in terms of building adequate infrastructure and, and maintaining it afterwards. It's about asset management too, it's not just about services. You're investing in structures and equipment, you need to, to manage them in a way that they, you know, have a long life cycle, that they're repaired appropriately and that all takes space. And there may be opportunities to partner with other entities that also have, you know, need for public workspace. You know, that way we can offload some of our costs. So, um, I, you know, I think staff is, is, has done a good job. I totally, as a grant maker, I totally understand the need to, um, have a project that's consistent with the project description that was submitted and approved for the grant and the financing, not, not just the, the grant, but the, the actual financial terms. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm going to support this tonight and I would, uh, you know, urge the rest of the council to do the same. We can talk about housing and all the options for housing, you know, to our November ninth meeting. And, uh, Councilmember Penrose, I don't know if you have another question or that hand has been continued up since your last question? You do have a question, okay. Councilmember Penrose?
You are muted, Councilmember Penrose, you're muted.
I have no objection to public works having the space that they need to do the public works that we need to do in this town. I'm not complaining or questioning the need for five acres. My only point was that if we are going to be doing something like installing solar, I asked the question, is it possible to put it on the roof? I'm not saying it needs to be on the roof, I don't know the answer to that question. It's a question, that's all. And I am in, in favor of this proposal and I hope, um, I hope it passes tonight as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Penrose. Um, are we ready for a motion?
I can move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Council member Jimenez?
Yes.
Council member Rarbock?
Yes.
Council member Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, John, for answering my question and for showing more points of some of the questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me and I, I apologize. Yeah, you know, we're, we're, we, we try to do what we can do and I apologize if I in any way was was, was, was advocating too strongly. Sorry.
Yeah. And you know, the discussion of what else can fit on the property, you know, we paid good money for, you know, we should look at all options for, for using the property and, and just try to stay focused on the property at large as opposed to the footprint needed for the public. So thanks, everybody, for the vigorous discussion. And we're moving on to item three A, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, mandatory organics waste disposal reduction.
And that is me. So good evening again, city council members. Jennifer Chong, your Public Works Program Manager. Really pleased to be here in front of you this evening with this item. Partially study session. We do have a couple, a couple of recommendations for you tonight. I do want to preface before I jump into this that this is going to be a fairly hearty presentation. As you could probably tell from the staff report, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is a huge piece of legislation. It is probably the most significant piece of legislation passed in the solid waste world in, you know, the last few decades. And so there's a lot of pieces to it that will impact Half Moon Bay. I do want to reassure the council that we are in very strong position to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three and to roll out the different programs in a really thoughtful and sustainable way. And we have things lined up for you throughout the end of the year to make sure that we stay on time. And so the point of this presentation is really to just give you all an overview of what Senate Bill, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is, what it means for us and where we're at. And I will try to keep it as high level as possible and move us through this, leave lots of times for questions. But I do want to make sure that I give you as comprehensive of an overview as I can. So that way you're informed if, in case the community asks you what this is all about.
Jennifer, I just want to jump in for a second. Since we only have four council members here this evening, it's going to be really important for at least three to have their cameras on during discussion. So try, try to keep that in mind. Others might need to, you know, step out briefly and use facilities. So let's, let's just keep our eye on at least three having their cameras on. Thanks. Jennifer, take it away.
Thank you. Okay. So before going into what SB thirteen eighty-three is, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for anyone that doesn't live in the solid waste world and hasn't been tracking this legislation, just context as to where it came from. And really SB thirteen eighty-three is a response from the state to climate change. And so as the council, the community in Half Moon Bay is acutely aware, we are experiencing the, the obstacles that climate change presents, whether that be coastal erosion, wildfires, drought, sea level rise. And climate change was really the driving factor behind the state wanting to pass this piece of legislation. A quick science, science recap, climate change is, is the result of greenhouse, the greenhouse gas effect, which basically there's pollution that goes into the air. We call that greenhouse gas, greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions, which include carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide and fluorinated gases. And they go out into the atmosphere and they get trapped and they create what we kind of call the warming blanket. And that's what causes the earth to heat up. And so SB thirteen eighty-three is really designed to tackle methane emissions. And so where do methane emissions come from? So methane comes from the anaerobic breakdown of organic waste. And organic waste includes, you know, food, lumber, paper, green waste, anything that comes from your garden. When we put that into the landfill and it starts breaking down, that's where the methane comes from. And you'll see on that chart on the right side of your screen, that organic waste makes up two thirds of California's entire waste stream. And that accounts to about twenty seven million tons of organic waste per year. And so SB thirteen eighty-three is designed to cut back on the amount of organic waste going into the waste stream. So with that context and that foundation, let's talk about what SB thirteen eighty-three actually does. So we already talked about their overall goals. SB thirteen eighty-three has two main targets that it established for the entire state. And that's one, to reduce the amount of organic waste that's disposed, so thrown into the landfill by seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-five. And so that's about twenty million tons annually across the state. In addition to that target, they also established another target that says we want to recover twenty percent of all edible food that's been getting thrown away. We want to recover that for, recover that for human consumption. So we want to take that out of the waste stream and then we want to redistribute it to community members in need that are going hungry. So that's the high level overview of what SB thirteen eighty-three is looking to accomplish in a very short period of time. In terms of implementation, so SB thirteen eighty-three was signed into law in two thousand sixteen, just with those targets. But the actual legislation, legislative text didn't come out from CalRecycle until November of twenty twenty. And as everyone will recall, twenty twenty was a very challenging year for many different reasons. And there was a lot of conversation going on in the industry between cities, jurisdictions, counties, haulers and the state about what is the right implementation timeline for this piece of legislation. Again, the most significant piece of legislation in this realm, probably in the last thirty years. And so there was a lot of concern coming from the industry and from jurisdictions just about, well, if we have to do this by January first, twenty twenty-two, there's a lot of obstacles, you know, and there's a lot of pressure being put onto our communities. And we recognize climate change is absolutely, you know, a crisis. And how do we do that while we're dealing with a bunch of other crises at the same time? And so that conversation's been going on. It continues to happen. Ultimately, the state did decide that they want to stick with their original implementation timeline of having at least an enforceable mechanism or ordinance. They want all jurisdictions to have something in place by January first, twenty twenty-two. And they want us to start conducting annual compliance reviews, education outreach, really getting all of our generators, whether they be residential multifamilies or commercial businesses, ready to comply by January first, twenty twenty-four. Now, just a couple of weeks ago, there was another piece of legislation that was signed that does give local jurisdictions a little bit more flexibility. And I'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. But in the legislative text, what the timeline is, is by January first, they want some type of ordinance in place. The state can technically begin enforcement on that date. But they give local jurisdictions, i.e. cities, two full years to bring all of their generators up and to, up to compliance until we are then forced to start levying fines and doing administrative citations. So really, January first, twenty twenty-two to January first, twenty twenty-four is a very heavy education and outreach period where we need to be making sure that everyone is aware of what SB thirteen eighty-three is asking our community to do. And then January first, twenty twenty-five, again, is the target deadline for when we're hoping to reach these targets that SB thirteen eighty-three established. And so again, a really big legislative text, I'm going to try to break it down into six slides. So if you have questions, happy to take them at the end. But I'm going to try to give you a really high level overview of the biggest impacts to us in terms of programming. And I'll, each slide after this, we'll dig into each of these category areas just a little bit more. So the first, personally, I think probably the most significant piece of SB thirteen eighty-three is this mandatory organics collection service. This piece of the legislation requires all jurisdictions to provide organic waste, including food scraps to all generators. It also requires that all of these curbside carts and bins and even your indoor waste collection containers, if it's a business or if it's a supermarket, to follow our universal color scheme. Now, I'm very happy that I don't have to go into this one too much because Half Moon Bay is very, very fortunate that we already offer this service as part of our franchise agreement. And so back in two thousand seventeen, when we were negotiating our new franchise agreement, our new solid waste franchise agreement, council was met with this policy decision about whether or not to include that base level of organic service for everyone. And, you know, council had the foresight to see this coming down the pipeline. We had a fantastic consultant that also said, hey, this is probably a really good idea. And we ultimately ended up building that in. And so I just need to take a moment to say thank you to the council for doing that. Thank you to the community for understanding the need to put this into the service. Because it's absolutely saved a lot of heartache and a lot of, honestly, ratepayer money. Because to go out now, to renegotiate, to get this service in by January would be far more expensive, considering again, that it's now state mandated and with all of the, all of the complications that have come up with COVID. And so that's all I'll say about that. Just because I'm not spending a lot of time in it doesn't mean that it's not a huge accomplishment and that it's not a huge lift. We are just very fortunate in Half Moon Bay that we don't have to worry about this because council took care of this back in two thousand seventeen. And then in regards to just the indoor waste collection stations, we'll be going out, working with the businesses, getting them to upgrade all of their stations. I do want to say that they do not have to decommission any currently existing stations until twenty thirty-six. And so if they have stations already, if they have carts and, or they have indoor waste collection stations that are already in use, they can use them until the end of their useful life, i.e. when they have to replace them or until twenty thirty-six, whichever comes first. So we're, we're not going to be going out to businesses and saying, hey, starting January first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, you need to buy brand new stations. There'll be some time for that, for that turnover. But that's something that businesses are going to need to be aware of and planning for in the next, in the next ten years or so. The next program that SB thirteen eighty-three mandates is an edible food recovery program. And again, this is all intended to take out edible food that can be eaten by humans and avoid putting that into the waste stream. And again, Half Moon Bay is very fortunate to be part of San Mateo County, to have a really strong partnership with the Office of Sustainability, County of San Mateo Office of Sustainability. And, you know, over the last few years, the county has been, was doing a lot of research in this area and they came to the conclusion that it makes a lot more sense to do a countywide program than for each of our individual jurisdictions to come up with our own programs within our own, in our own city lines. And so they actually came to all the jurisdictions and said, hey, we're willing to run this program countywide. We think there's economy scale. We think it'll cause less confusion and we think that it just makes sense. And staff strongly agrees with this. And so part of the recommendations that you have coming before you tonight is the memorandum of understanding from, from San Mateo County, basically formalizing that partnership that will allow the county to come in and implement our edible food recovery program on our behalf, do the reporting, do the implementation, the education. And so pending, pending execution of that MOU, we will be compliant with this mandate of SB thirteen eighty-three starting January first, twenty twenty-two. And I do quickly just want to shout out Bo Jack Simon and Jack Johnson, who are spearheading this effort on behalf of the county. They're in the audience. And so council, if you have questions specifically about this program, they are here and they are available to take questions and clarify anything that you may want to ask. Next program mandate is capacity planning. And so again, this is another one where we're very fortunate because we already built in the food waste portion into our solid waste franchise agreement. And we have this, you know, this franchise agreement that covers us for ten years up till twenty twenty-eight. Part of that agreement basically says that Republic Services, our franchised hauler, will make sure that all of our material that we sort is taken to the correct facility, that they have capacity for any of the material that we generate in Half Moon Bay and that it will be processed the way that it needs to be processed. So again, organic material is going to be composted and recyclables are going to be separated and baled and sent out where it needs to be recycled. Not all cities, not all jurisdictions in the state have this built into their franchise agreement. And so a lot of other jurisdictions are going out right now and having to figure out where their material is going to go, now that they're going to have to add in, you know, food scraps and organic, organics collection services to their, to the services that they provide. And so again, we're fortunate here that this is not something that we really need to worry about. But that's not to say that it's not a significant piece of the legislation. There's just been a lot of planning and a lot of anticipation for some of these needs. And, you know, the council made some really, really intelligent policy decisions that have placed us in a really great position to be able to move forward on SB thirteen eighty-three. The fourth program area in SB thirteen eighty-three has to do with education and outreach. And really, this is just focused on making sure that everyone in the city of Half Moon Bay, all generators, understand what SB thirteen eighty-three is asking them to do and can participate in the programs appropriately. And so that means making sure that the right stuff goes in the right bin, that the colors of their indoor containers are matching the colors of the outdoor containers that we're providing, making sure that the signage and that any of the language that is on their signs or their bins matches the program that we offer. And so while there's some additional information that we're going to have to provide the community, you know, specific to SB thirteen eighty-three, we already do a lot of outreach to the community in this area through, again, our franchise agreement with Republic. We have annual mailers that go out to the businesses. We have quarterly mailers that go out to the residential, resident, all of our residential customers. We also do a lot of workshops. We have events where we table and have a lot of information available. And so while we are going to have to tweak some of this information to include SB thirteen eighty-three specific information, the infrastructure is in place. And we do have ways to get that information out to the public in a way that isn't going to completely shift the way that we currently, currently operate. So these last two program areas are going to be more significant than, or rather, they're going to be a little bit more of a lift in terms of what we have currently have in place and what we're being asked to do. This recovered organic waste product procurement is one that's still very much being workshopped, both, you know, in the county, in the Bay Area and statewide. And essentially what this program is requiring is that every jurisdiction has to procure a specific type and a specific amount of organic waste product. And so there's two elements to it. There's the first element, which is you have to get recycled content paper products. So that's printing paper, writing paper, you know, paper towels. If it's, you know, financially feasible, if it's available at the same quality and the same cost, get the recycled content stuff instead of the, you know, the, the virgin material products. And so staff's going to go ahead and revise the environmental purchasing policy that we had passed, I think, just late last year. We'll go ahead and revise it and we'll go ahead and revise some, some of our contract templates to make sure that wherever feasible, we are making sure that we're getting recycled content paper products. The second portion of this program is one, again, this is the part that still needs a little bit of workshopping. But every jurisdiction is required to procure a significant amount of organic material. For the city of Half Moon Bay, our target, and this is annually, our annual target of procurement is about nine hundred and eighty-five tons of material. And so there are four different materials that can, that can satisfy this target. And you can, you know, get all of one material, you can mix it up, you can do half and half or what have you. But if we were to try to satisfy our target using purely compost, it would be about fifteen, one thousand four hundred twenty-eight cubic yards of compost that we would need to procure and spread annually. If we were to do it through mulch, it'd be nine hundred and eighty-five tons. And while we are allowed to meet this requirement via biomass electricity and renewable gas, there's been a lot of studies done by CalRecycle and other agencies throughout the Bay Area that have shown that those two, those two materials are not viable options at the moment just because most of, most of what's being generated is already spoken for. So both of that area, there's not surplus for us to go after and buy. So that's not something that's going to be able to help us satisfy our target, you know, within the foreseeable future. And so really the focus for us is going to be that compost and mulch. And really figuring out, one, you know, where do we get it from? Two, where do we use it? And, and three, how do we get it from point A to point B? And so we've been working with the county. And so we've been working with the county, we're in conversations with the county um, Office of Sustainability on this item as well. They're doing some really interesting research and some pilots um, having to do with, again, compost procurement and um, compost spreading. That, you know, we're hoping to be able to partner with them. We've been talking to some other community organizations like the RCD. And our hope for this one is that we're going to be able to. Do some type of countywide approach in order to avoid creating, you know, an artificially inflated market where everyone's going after the same material or everyone's fighting for limited land. To spread all of this material, um, because it is a significant. It's just a significant amount and that's just for Half Moon Bay. Other jurisdictions have their own targets that they're going to have to procure and the county has their own target as well. So it's just a lot of material. Obviously, we want to be able to buy back the material that we're producing by putting more things into uh, the green bins and, you know. We want to create that closed loop. We just need to figure out strategically how to do that. So it's both sustainable, sustainable and um, sustainably environmentally and also financially. So working on that more to come, um, but this one is something we're going to have to continue to watch and uh, work with our partners on to figure out how best to implement this. And then the last um, kind of broad area of SB thirteen eighty three is uh, inspection and enforcement. So of course, anytime that you roll out legislation that's of this magnitude. The only way that it moves the needle in terms of reaching the goals if, you know, is if someone's going out and making sure that people are complying. Um, and so this, you know. This requirement does fall on the local jurisdictions and they're, you know, relying on. Local cities like us to go out, do the inspections, do the enforcement, um, do the education. To get people to divert more material. And so by January first twenty twenty two, uh, there's a couple of things that needs to be in place. We talked about that enforceable requirement, um, you know, the, the, the ordinance, which will be coming to council later this year. There was also some language about making sure that, you know, we have CalGreen and water efficient landscape ordinance, both of which we already have, so that part's checked off. And then um, and then obviously, again, you have the two years to. Do the identification, to do the audits, to educate people. And then starting in twenty 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 four and every year after, um, there is that enforcement piece. And so um, this program is probably going to be one of the ones that is going to require some additional resources, some, a lot of additional staff time. You know, someone has to go out and flip the lids and do the education, do the audits. And so um, there's conversations going on between staff and between Republic Services to see how we can partner and again, best roll out something that's both. That makes sense economically, that makes sense, you know, for the structure that we have in place right now. Um, and there'll be more to come on this as well as conversations develop. I do also want to mention that there are some technology developments that are. Currently still in the works, again, this, this is such a new idea that the industry hasn't quite come up with a solution yet. And so um, there are app developers, there are different software developers that are working feverishly to try to roll out modules. That can help with some of this enforcement, some of this, these inspection requirements. SB thirteen eighty three does allow for remote monitoring, uh, which would require, you know, you to put something in the bins in order for you to check remotely. What's in the bin and if there's contamination and to be able to identify that and share that with the generators. But that's still in development and there's still, you know, a lot of people that are still piloting that software. Um, and expect that probably to come out and to start becoming more mainstream in the next few months. And then one last area that I did just want to touch on, it's not technically an official program area because it. Is kind of overarching, it touches every single program area in SB thirteen eighty three. It's just the uh, extensive record keeping requirements that SB thirteen eighty three does require of local jurisdictions. And so you'll see on the screen, these, this is just a snapshot of every area that has some type of specific reporting requirement. That we as a city are going to have to track. And have available um, at all times for the state if they choose to come and audit our programs. And so while the city is going to be responsible for packaging it, keeping all of this in one location. So again, that it's accessible by the state. There are going to be certain elements of this record keeping that is going to trickle down to our generators. You know, we're going to be having to ask generators where they bought their materials or, you know, where they're storing certain items or. You know, how much food, you know, that they're generating at a given time and that reporting, um, we're going to need the help of the community to help us. Make sure that we're compliant with these record keeping requirements. And so again, in some of this too, the edible food recovery program, that's going to be run by the county. You know, obviously our organic collection services and our hauler, that's Republic Services, and so there's a lot of different. Organizations and a lot of different partners that are going to have to work with us on this. Unfortunately, we have great relationships and we're all working in the same direction to kind of, to try to figure out how best. To get all these records into one place, uh, but this is going to be a signif- something new. It is going to be some, a new significant. You know, lift for staff to make sure that we're doing this properly and that we're checking all the boxes that SB thirteen eighty three is asking us to do. Um, and so with that, I promised that I would come back to that piece of legislation that's giving us a little bit more wiggle room and that's SB six nineteen. It was signed literally, I think, two weeks ago by Governor Newsom. And this basically gives local jurisdictions the opportunity to submit an intent to comply to CalRecycle. Which basically protects us from CalRecycle uh, administering any penalties to us in the year twenty twenty two. And so really, this was the compromise between postponing. The start date of SB thirteen eighty three, which a lot of jurisdictions were asking for, again, due to all the obstacles and all of. Just, just a lot of the obstacles that we've been facing the last two years now. But still wanting to move things forward. And so um, this, while this is great, gives us a little bit of re- breathing room, it's still our intent to push hard. On implementing SB thirteen eighty three as soon and as reasonably as possible. But this does give us a little bit, a little bit more of a chance to take a step back to see how best we do this for the city of Half Moon Bay. Again, so that way it's sustainable long term, both environmentally and financially. And so with that, uh, my last slide, conclusion, again, SB thirteen eighty three is a, is a big piece of legislation. And it is going to rely heavily on city staff to implement it and to oversee it for the foreseeable future. There's no end date to SB thirteen eighty three, and so this is a program that is going to require investment and resources. You know, year over year over year, it's a new program that we are going to have to build into our programs. Success, I've already named, I think, three or four partners, success. We are going to have to lean heavily and build up those partnerships with Republic, with the county, with RCD, with all of our neighboring jurisdictions. Uh, because this piece of legislation really does affect us all. And the only way that it is successful is if we all come together and um, move forward together as a county. And the last conclusion, um, this is the one that I hate to say, but you know, I think it's important that we, that we're honest with the community. It is inevitable that customer rates are going to have to adjust. Um, I think, you know, just from the presentation alone, you've seen that there are a lot of new requirements that come into play with SB thirteen eighty three. A lot of pressures um, on local jurisdictions to roll out these programs and they are going to require resources. Uh, and so, you know, while we have willing partners in the county, um, and we have willing partners in RCD and Republic Services to help us meet these requirements. You know, we are going to have to, to fund those changes. Um, and we'll likely be coming back with an amendment to Republic Services franchise agreement when we figure out how best to approach the reporting requirements, the auditing requirements. Um, and so this is something that, you know, unfortunately is inevitable and we'll be having to come back to council at a later date um, to discuss, you know, how, how we do this. And so with that, I wanted to just pause just for a moment, give John a chance to chime in. Um, I know that this has been a really big topic for him as well, so I just wanted to give him a chance to touch on anything I might have missed.
Oh, Jennifer, I think you've done um. An unbelievable job. Uh, I, I think you've covered, you know, everything that's, that needed to be covered. I, I just really wanna uh, reiterate that particularly as it relates to um, the issues of. Of the compost or the organic material, we are truly hoping that we can continue to work toward um, a regional. Solution to this rather than um, in each individual jurisdictional basis of, of having to acquire X amount. Of the organic material, so, and we really, really um, appreciate uh, the county stepping up with regard to. The uh, the food. The, the, dealing with the, 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 trying to, to get additional uh, food organics. And we're hoping that they, RCD, along with maybe some other regional partners, can work with each of us and the cities around the county to look at that. So I just want to put that on the table, that that's something that we are extremely interested and hopeful for down the road. But uh, we have a lot of work and um, I just say. Sometimes it, it, it may look like our solid waste efforts aren't, aren't doing that much from day to day, but this is an unbelievable undertaking. To, to work through and deal with it and only is getting to this point due to the support of many folks, including. Jennifer, Republic Services, um, the county, sustainability. A number of folks out there who are, are really making this happen, so I, I really want to thank them. And Jennifer particularly, uh, in our staff for making this easy for me. And um, and moving this forward to you and um, certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, John. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and just throw up the recommendations, the next step, and then we'll go ahead and open up for questions from council. Again, we have um, two representatives from the Office of Sustainability, we have Republic in the audience. Again, this is going to take a team effort and everyone is here to um, support, you know, support the community, support staff, so thank you for being here and then answer any questions that council has. And so just as a reminder, we are um, asking that the council open the hearing because uh, we were. Originally planning on bringing the draft model ordinance before the council this evening. With, you know, some of the changes in the legislation and we took a look at that model ordinance, we realized that we have a little bit more time to do this. A little bit more thoughtfully and rather than just throwing in a new chapter, we really want to weave in these elements and incorporate it with the municipal code that's already existing. Um, and also make it as, you know, quite frankly, community friendly as possible. The solid waste sections have not been touched in quite some time, and so we'd like to take the time to really um. Make it user friendly, really clean out the entire Muni code as it, as it relates to solid waste. So we're asking for a little bit more time to do that. So we're asking for council to open the public hearing, conduct the study session, take public comment. Um, and obviously provide us with any direction that you might have now. And then continue that public hearing and the introduction of the ordinance to December seventh, which is when we plan to bring that ordinance before the council. Um, and then tonight, as mentioned before, we are asking that you adopt that resolution, allowing the city manager to enter into that MOU with the county. Of San Mateo Office of Sustainability, um, so that they can implement that edible food recovery program on the behalf of the city. Uh, and so again, and then our next step will be come back in December uh, with that Muni code or that um. That amendment to the municipal code, so that way we're in compliance with SB thirteen eighty three. And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and just stop screen share so I can see all the council members and happy to open it up for questions.
Uh, clarifying questions from council would be entertained now and then um, we'll open the public hearing and bring it back for council direction. Are there questions right now for staff? Council member Rarbock.
It seems to me that this is gonna cost a lot of money. And not that I'm opposed to it, mind you, I think it's a wonderful goal. But is the idea that the city should not uh, take a big financial hit? But that frankly, the, the uh, the cost of implementing this will be spread out among the ratepayers? Is that the general idea of what your thinking is?
This is, um, certainly, this is a piece of. The solid waste program, this is again pushed uh, forward by the legislature and ultimately implemented through CalRecycle. The same entities um, that have required other requirements, the diversion of various components from the landfill into um. Different uh, areas, organics and um, and recyclables, plastics, papers. So this is just another piece of the solid waste program. So this is an obvious place where the ratepayers um, are, are asked to do that. This is no different than the um, federal government or the state government imposing new requirements for sewers. The sewer ratepayers would be the ones um, responsible for um, assuming those costs associated with that. And again, it's spread out overall, so the cost um, is borne um, fairly among the, the, the entirety of the group.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Thank you, council member Rarbock, anybody else? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time and um. Accept questions from the public.
No, have any hands raised at the moment, vice mayor?
Okay, we'll give it a minute.
No hands raised.
Okay. So we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back for comments from council and the directions. Any other questions? Council member Penrose.
Yes, um, my question pertains to the edible food recovery. Contract that we're um. Going to be making with the county. Does the food that is recovered from, for instance, restaurants or grocery stores? Here in the city of Half Moon Bay. Stay in Half Moon Bay or because it's county run? Are we donating? Edible foods to other parts of the county?
And so I'll, I'll take first step at that, but Jessica, um, I think I'm gonna ask you to bring Jack Johnson over from the county as well. I, I think he's going to be able to provide more specifics. There are programs in Half Moon Bay that are designed to, again, recover some of the material and hopefully distribute it in the community. The edible food recovery is tiered, so there's tier one generators that are pretty much just large supermarkets. That are required to, you know, comply, comply with this mandate, you know, right off the bat. I think we only have two tier one generators, which is Safeway and New Leaf, and both of them have backhaul programs in place. And so they're complying through their own programs. Um, and then the tier two generators, that'll be, you know, down the line. And I'll let, you know, the two Jax go ahead and speak to, to exactly the logistics of that program. Jack?
Hi, thank you all. I, I think by and large, uh, the food will stay in uh, Half Moon Bay. Your, your tier one generators are Safeway and, and New Leaf. The only restaurant I believe that is on your list. Is um. On Main Street and the name escapes me right now. It is not currently. Yes, that's it. And the Ritz Carlton, I believe, will be your hotel. And the school system that has a, any food facility, that will be a tier two. Those will come in um, under the regulations into twenty twenty four. The, the way the program works is that it's not the county that's collecting the food. Uh, the county is just coordinating this and building the infrastructure. Food recovery organizations um, like Second Harvest, Pacifica Resource Center, Samaritan House, um, are, uh, they. Are the people who hold the contracts and they um, pick up and set delivery schedules with generators, collect the food. And they redistribute it, it's not my office or the county that, that is doing that. We have been building the infrastructure uh, to support them to do that. Coastside Hope, um, I met with them and volunteered with them to understand their program early. In my position and they have a wonderful program and I intend uh, to. in my position and they have a wonderful program and I intend to, as soon as this MOU goes through, to contact them again and see if we can work with them to expand their program for them to to become a food recovery organization under the thirteen eighty three regulations. And therefore, all of the food they would collect would stay in the half of there.
Thank you so much, Jack. I knew you'd have all of that additional context that council member Penrose was looking for. Did that, did you have any follow up questions, council member Penrose for us?
No, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a question? Um, okay, so I'll comment. I think this is where we need to be. I agree with Harvey. It's going to be expensive. I think life's only going to get more expensive as we more and more have to remediate, you know, years and decades in a century of pollution. And we're going to have to change our technologies to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions and conserve water. I think life's only going to get more expensive. But it's something that needs to be done. We need to take a full life cycle approach with with more and more things, you know, and support producer responsibility. Sacramento has been working on that for several years and you're going to see more of it as we go along. I think Steph put together a wonderful presentation. They've got a good grasp of what the legislation requires, what the implications are. And we have some, you know, good partners. I do think though that we have to work on achieving the best economies of scale that we can. And that means you're taking a twenty cities approach in San Mateo County and working with the county to to coordinate and help reduce, you know, all of our costs to the extent we can and leverage our our resources, you know, staffing and otherwise. As you saw, this is very staff intensive. So the more we can partner and leverage all of our resources, the better off we're going to be. So I would encourage the county to, you know, continue to exercise leadership here. And would 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 say that I'm very, you know, pleased with our staff's engagement and performance on this particular issue. But I think we are where we have to be and we're just going to have to you know, dig in and make it work for us. So can we have the recommendations slide up again so that folks can understand where we're headed here?
And council member Jimenez does have his hand up.
Council member Jimenez.
Can I make comments or we have to wait for? Yeah. Actually, I Jennifer, excellent, you know, presentation. I was following every step. What I shared with you for the about four years, actually, I've been doing research, you know, on something similar to that. And about three years ago, I had the opportunity to meet Jack Johnson and we we talked about this. And it's something that I'm very interested, you know, in learning more and doing more for community. I've had the opportunity to to meet with Travis. I'm strong from Republic, from Republic Services. I went on a tour of the Oxburn and the and the programs that they have. And I'm very interested, you know, in what they're doing in the recycling and the composting. And it's something that we really need to do for community, you know, especially when it comes around education. It's something that we need to do. Really, you know, planning on on the composting that comes, you know, from Republic and from the Office of Sustainability, I know kind of San Mateo. It's an excellent program, like, you know, like I mentioned. I learned about their program about Jack, you say about three years ago, maybe it was when we first started our conversation. And I had the opportunity to know to have a few phone calls, you know, with some of the staff from the county at the time. And I'm actually still need to do one more tour, you know, over public services, you know, one of the the stations in I believe in Mountain View. I just, you know, became a bit busy right now, but I'm looking forward to the tour as well. And this is an excellent, you know, program to implement our community in the food, you know, recovery. It's something that we could use here in our community. I know an organization in Half Moon Bay, they're already working, you know, with some with the generator from over the hill. And it's something that we need to do locally. There's definitely, you know, it's like I said, it was an excellent presentation. Very a lot of information and very easy to follow. And I think we need to do the same thing, you know, bring into a school district. Especially for high school and upper grades, but I think, you know, or lower grades will actually understand you know, the the benefit of having a program like this in our community. So very interested, you know, I'm if I could get involved, you know, I will. You know, especially when doing education and outreach and a few other things. So, you know, so like, like I say, no, Jack explained this to me, you know, a while back and I've been, you know, working on it and doing more research or how we could use this. And finally, it comes to us to the city of Half Moon Bay. So it's great to have you here. So thank you.
Thank you, member, thank you, council member Jimenez. Vice Mayor Reddick, I'll go ahead and put those recommendations back up on the screen if that's okay. Okay. Let me go ahead and share that.
So is there any further direction to staff that council members would like to give at this time? Okay, so Harvey?
No, I just think if I understand correctly, that the item three, we need to approve the MOU with the county for the edible food recovery program.
Yeah, so we need to also continue the public hearing. So the motion would be to would be number two and number three, if you'd like to make that motion?
Okay. I move that we continue the public hearing and introduction of the ordinance about SB thirteen eighty three to December seventh. And to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an MOU for the county of San Mateo, the establishment of an edible food recovery program in Half Moon Bay.
I'll second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Penrose?
Aye.
Council member Rarbock?
Yes.
Council member Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddit?
Yes.
Motion carries.
See you back here in December. Thank you.
You're muted, Debbie.
So moving on to the next item, which is about Smith Fields.
Thanks. And again, somebody's going to take care of putting up my little, my very short PowerPoint. And then they're going to force me into into a into remedial Zoom class tomorrow.
John, I'm checking the calling me stepped away for a second.
Sorry, folks. I'll actually, I'll see if I can bring it up and be done with it.
It's up now, John.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. Thank you. And I promise you, Will, this was going to be a short meeting and I promise you to try to hold to this being that way. So again, we're here to talk about the Smithfield Park master planning. Next slide, please. Tonight, there are a series of actions, notably basically, one incorporating this into the capital improvement program as a as a project. Two is allocating park related in lieu funds to fund the work that is proposed. Three, basically executing a contract with Gates and Associates, a landscape architect to conduct community outreach to assist with looking at the constraints and existing conditions and to ultimately work with our civil with a civil engineer to develop a master plan for the park. And then finally, a request to authorize a contract with Friar and Loretta, civil engineer for the work related to this project. Next, please. So we were with the council about a month and a half or so ago. And which time you authorized the city staff to proceed with getting these quotes and proposals to move forward with master planning of the site. At that time, and as we're continuing to hold in this, there is a potential donor who has indicated a desire to potentially fund significant improvements at this point, particularly related to parking and access, paving out the parking and access areas for Smithfield and potentially additional improvements. At the time, when we returned to you first, you agreed that it made sense for us to start to look at this and try to evaluate and set a cost for this. And in essence, what this does in this process would allow us to develop a plan that we could first identify reasonable cost estimates for any and all improvements in kind of the phase one piece of this, which is particularly where we see the donors contribution working. It would also set us up for being able to move forward with finishing up SEQA work, environmental work, as well as moving forward with a could a coastal development permit, a CDP. So those are all the the basis for how this gets us down the road to the point of making all of this kind of happen. I think it's important, just a little bit of the history here, I won't go into great detail with that, but note that and remind folks that this park was built privately, or at least portions of it built privately as far back as nineteen sixty six. It has been in various stages of construction and improvement over the years. And the city has only actually owned and controlled completely the property since two thousand and eleven. And interestingly, I was working through in two thousand and eleven, there was a very detailed staff report. I think it's still a very good staff report that happy to share out there about sort of the issues of taking on the site, taking on the capital projects. And there was a lot of work done at that point. There was also work done in master planning and environmental in two thousand and fourteen. But I think, you know, priorities just shifted and changed around some other emerging issues. And so I'm happy that staff is very happy at this point to be back talking about this. And just to say that this plan and this process is not necessarily just driven by the donor interest, but also by the direction of our parks master plan, which was adopted by the council in two thousand and nineteen. So this was envisioned. So this is consistent with what we were looking to do. And I think I've said it in the staff report, but two years ago, we had every intention of moving forward with this master planning and other things just sort of got in the way, including COVID over the last two years to just didn't allow us to move forward with this piece. Next slide, please. So these are just some of the reasons, I think, why the master planning is important. It's pretty clear after since nineteen sixty six, I'm not sure how much of the fields have been reworked, resotted, reseeded. And when these were built, they were not built as what municipal fields, Little League fields would have been built today, including subterranean tile drainage. So you have water that drains away when it rains. And so if many of you, I'm sure have been out there, Little League certainly would attest to it. At times during the winter with not huge rains, we have significant water standing and challenges issue and issues out there. We also have very difficult issues with a single two inch water line that serves the entire park. So water pressure and getting adequate irrigation is not very successful at times. And basically, what you see here is the area where our sprinklers are working. It's nice and green. And the areas where they're not really hitting well because of water pressure, they're not. So that that's just a part of what we're going to look at and evaluate and move forward. The other piece in this slide is that we struggle with just having storage. Again, much back to our courtyard issues, we have needs out here to have the mower, the large mower and other things stored here rather than having the trailer and move them around from other locations. This is a central location for that piece of equipment. And right now that is in a relatively non-weatherproof storage and Little League is in the same issue. All of the Little League storage and all of the other folks out there are using storage containers and things out there. So this is a piece of of things that we have to deal with. Their next slide. We've heard a lot over the years from the from the dog park folks that they would like to have a large dog area to be able to run the dogs and separate from the smaller dogs. That's something that's out there. The current facility I think works for for many people and is is certainly at least a facility that and a lot of people enjoy it. We know that. But that is something we have heard. And then, you know, one of the questions that came out of the the master planning process for the parks was was in particular whether the the horseshoes were in the right location. One idea that was surfaced in that process was with the Johnson House Train Depot. A better location perhaps for that. Again, this is not about trying to relocate them, but it is about envisioning envisioning what could be and what would be best for that. And this is a significant area of Smithfield that 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 might be better suited and the and the users might enjoy another that location better. Again, something to ponder and think about as we work with the community. Next. And then certainly with this site, there are many there are several constraints, but notably environmental constraints. There are wetlands. There are wetland buffers required from from areas. And we're working on evaluating those more fully. But basically, what we really see is with all of this fairly fairly limited additional area for footprint of this of this park. And so I think some of our outreach will have to, you know, recognize and relate to the community that that there are limits and what those expectations should be. And I should note that the back to the horseshoes, the Little League, we as part of this process, we will be meeting individually with those stakeholders, talking to them and getting input from them as well as going to the community. So none, no one's going to be left out of the process that wants to participate. The other piece of the constraints kind of equation are these, there's two of these green painted green bunkers that were built, we we understand from around World War Two for the radar station. They're basically not really weatherproof now. They have marginal, if no, if any roof. And something that I think we need to really think about during the process is whether these need to be there, need to continue and how historically significant they are. I know there are people in the community that feel strongly about these and many other things. But we want to at least talk about it because these end up being in a very challenging place for us to be able to utilize the full site, what we limited areas that we have available to us. Next, please. So, but we lost the coverage, but really the the message of this doesn't change. The question is sort of that we're going to be asking if you approve proceeding in this manner is what's your vision? And so that's something we'll be asking, talking to the community and working through and and certainly back to Planning Commission, City Council for for ideas as well. And we did kick off at the joint meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Parks and Rec Commission and and the B-PAC Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, a little bit of a visioning process, which BPAC, like pedestrian advisory committee, a little bit of a visioning process, which I think went really well, and it just sort of kicked off in the thought of all of this. Next, please. Oh, there we go. Who knew? So again, this is the recommendation and happy to answer any questions, but I won't belabor the point any longer.
Hello, council members, do you have questions for staff? Questions or comments?
Um, briefly. It's, I appreciate the fact that you brought up the environmental constraints, John. It's not well-known in the community, people think this is just an area you can build active. Recreation on and. I, I think when the exact environmental constraints are, are considered, people are gonna realize that. There's not that much that can be done with active. Parks. And, and that's just the reality. I, I wanna stress that. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a, John, could you just explain? The set of recommendations, how they all work together?
Sure. Some, we'll start with number one. When we came forward to the council at the. At the beginning or right at the end of the fiscal year, heading into the new fiscal year, we had recommended a series of projects and, and actions. To develop the, and, and with that became the capital improvement program. This project was not identified as one of those. And I think it, it, you know, what I will say is this is. I believe that we would have been probably, the council would have agreed that if the donor had come forward. A little earlier, but that, that's not a criticism, but if, if this had come forward a little earlier. This probably would have been a, a project identified and, and likely funded. Based on the priorities and how we prioritize, which is the availability of, of funding from outside sources, non-general funds, so I think from that perspective. Had that occurred, and it just was a simple timing issue. This would have been probably in the capital improvement program already, but it is not, so this would first. Put this and move this up from a future year into fiscal year. Twenty-one, twenty-two as a project in the capital improvement program. And you would see, and you see attached to is exhibit A to the resolution is the. Is what the sheet looks like that would go into fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two section there that talks about the project and what this is doing. The second piece of this would be to allocate. Two hundred thousand dollars from the Park in Lou Fund, which is restricted to park development, park design, park construction. And would allocate two hundred thousand dollars from that fund to, obviously to fund. The efforts here, these, these contracts as well as environmental biotic consultant and, and that work. So that would amend the capital budget to add that two hundred thousand in, which would then fund the project identified in number one. And then obviously, number three would be to. We did a, an informal but, but relatively formal process for RFP. Received five proposals, went through those and have recommended Gates and Associates as the. Landscape architect and design firm to help facilitate through the outreach and to help. Finalize and work through the, the master plan itself. And then the item last would be to fund Friar and Loretta, civil engineering firm that is on our on-call program. To do civil engineering, notably with the civil engineering and why this is very important at this point. We really have issues with stormwater, Harvey alluded to the issues of dealing with a lot of. Of, of potential wetlands and wetland areas and things we need to deal with, so we're gonna need to treat that stormwater that comes off of anything we do, including what we, what exists out there today is. Is quite impervious. We also have concerns about accessibility and making sure what we design meets. ADA and, and state accessibility requirements, so all those pieces are critical to do with that, and also the funder and donor. One of the things that any funder, donor would want to know is how much is this gonna cost, so. The, the civil is gonna be important and critical to the piece of getting at least conceptual level costing out. For the improvements, for various pieces of improvement, so we can come back ultimately. To and adopt this plan with the council. And you can at least decide at that point whether to move forward with a coastal development permit. Hold at that point, whether the donor is going to commit fully to this. And how we proceed beyond that point, but at least we have a plan in place, we have an idea for what we can do over the next. Ten years or so of this to, to look at, also grant. This will make us far more grant eligible and I think from a state funding and. And bond funding, this project is probably one of the most fundable projects that we may have on our, on our list of projects in terms of. You know, the, the, what it hits, the kind of project that it, that it is. The kind of project that, that what's being, that we see funded across the state. This is the kind of project that they seem to be funding with the bond monies to. So that, that in essence is what we're asking for.
And, and if you don't mind me popping in here, John, I just, I just wanna add that Carter Park really sets such a good example for us. On the right way to do this, to, to make a commitment, put some, put some skin in the game, really develop a doable plan. Get it to shovel-ready status. And that really puts us in a great position for funding and. You know, Carter Park, we were pursuing grant funding and it was through those efforts that we got connected with the state. And got the funding we are receiving there. And I think we're, we're confident and hopeful that doing the same at Smithfield will put us in a position for some of these projects to move forward. With outside money, which is really key for us.
Yeah, and, and, and this came forward, this whole idea of. Improving Smithfield, you know, four or five years ago, and I remember we had a discussion as to priorities, you know. Carter Park or Smithfield. And the, a majority of the council decided that we wanted to, you know, work on Carter Park for its. You know. Future potential impacts on economic development downtown, et cetera, et cetera, so. I, I agree, I think the Carter Park model is a good one, that's how you compete for grants, is you gotta be ready to go, you gotta have skin in the game, you gotta have community support, so. But that's what we're gonna have to do if we, if we want to improve Smithfield. I do agree with Harvey that the site is, you know, constrained. And we're going to have to set people's expectations about that, there's not a lot of. Room outside this footprint to make things, you know, larger, but I, but I do think. That the site doesn't function very well from a, from an ecological standpoint, it has stormwater impacts, it's one of the reasons that we have problems at Seymour Ditch. One of the reasons we have, you know, problems with drainage in that part of Wave Crest. I see this as an opportunity to actually make it more environmentally sustainable. You know, to improve the lighting and make that more efficient, improves the stormwater. Functioning. Make it more usable, to have a parking lot that's not an OSHA hazard because of, you know, dust and gravel. So it's a chance to actually make environmental improvements too, within a, a constrained footprint, so I think we ought to be looking at that as well. And. You know, look for ways like we did. With other projects to build, you know, funding support, you know. Naming rights or sponsorships. Creative ways to get the community, you know, to put their own skin in the game here. So I'd like us to look at that too, and maybe we come up with a, you know. Fun new name for it, to, to build community interest, but. You know, I think it's a good project to take on, I think it's long overdue. And. I, I just hope young people continue wanting to play ball. I saw an article recently, like people aren't wanting to play ball anymore, I hope that's not true. And. So I, I'm happy to move this forward. So anybody that can make a motion?
I will. That we. Did somebody wanna say something? I move that we amend the capital improvement program fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. To fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six CIP by adding the Smithfield Site Assessment. And Master Plan Project as a funded programmed project for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. That we amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget by allocating two hundred thousand dollars from the Parkland in Lou Feigs. Fund one twenty-five to the Smithfield Site Assessment and Master Plan Project. To support completion of site assessment and facilities master plan, including architectural, civil and environmental work. That we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Gates and Associates. In the amount of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for preparation. Of the Smithfield Park Facilities Master Plan. And that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Friar and Loretta Incorporated. In the amount of sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars for civil engineering. And cost estimating in support of the Smithfield Park Facilities Master Plan.
Before we take a second, I missed a raised hand. So could we please have Mike Ferrera?
Yes, Mike, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did want to comment that. To what? The Vice Mayor and. Councilmember Reddick, we, Councilmember Rarback. When the parks plan went to the Planning Commission, I attended that meeting. And four out of five. Planning commissioners basically wanted to move the field. They said, this is just not the place for a good park because of the water. What they were told was, well, we'll address that in the master plan. So here we are. At the master plan. And one of the most important things that you're voting on tonight. Is to get that determination. Of the site. And I just would hope. That. That be prioritized. As something that gets done first. So before you go and decide what you're gonna build out there. That you get a really good engineering understanding of that site. Because water is very difficult to deal with. You know, if you pump it out of the ground, it will simply backfill. Because that's what the water table is out there. And the other thing is, when you pump it out, where does it go? You know, you're on a coastal shelf. If you send it to the Wave Crest ditch. Then you get your erosion issue again, because that's where that ends up. So. You may end up needing to decide whether to basically raise the site. Or shutter, do artificial turf. As some way to kind of deal with, but there's probably expense in both of those things. And so that's why I think it's just. A matter of prudence to get that study prioritized. So that you or the planning commission can make decisions about where to go, that's all, thank you. And my grandson's playing it, so I'm interested.
Thank you, Mike, really appreciate it. Sorry, I almost missed you. Okay. Um, yeah, so I, I think that's actually staff's plan. That's where we're headed with those consultant contracts, is my understanding, is that correct, Mr. Dougie?
Yes, we actually are, have been working with environmental consultants on both. Identification of that, so tho- those are reflected in contracts that are smaller than what's council obligation and authority is necessary, so. I assure you that is actually occurring as we speak and front and foremost on our list to understand what the constraints are, so thank you.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, staff, for that report. What do they got going here? Okay, so do we have commission and committee updates?
And Vice Mayor, I don't believe we have any updates. I see John Schink has said no, and I haven't heard from Jill on this item, so no, not tonight, our next meeting.
Do we have council member reports? Seeing none? This meeting is adjourned. See you in November and happy Halloween.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Have a wonderful night.
Night.
Appreciate it, thank you, everybody.